This government meeting is brought to you by Eastworks and our local cable subscribers.
Okay, I'm calling to order the meeting of the Select Board for April 14th, 2022 at 6:30 PM. This is a joint meeting with the Finance Committee. And can we stand and say the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
The Pledge of Allegiance to comply in the United States of America and to republic the Constitution, one nation, under God, indivisible, equal liberty and justice.
All right, let's see what comes up tonight. Okay, Vicki, would you like to call your meeting to order too?
Yours are down, must be. Um, it's 6:31 and we are going to call the joint meeting with the Select Board, Finance Committee. Uh, it's Finance Committee to order.
Okay. Good, so we have nothing, uh, really on the agenda. Um, no public hearings, uh, any open time for the public? Reports in old business, we're going to go right down to new business, which is going to be basically discussion of the FY '23 revenue estimates, uh, and any of the department-level budget requests that maybe you've had some insight on after your various meetings so far at FinCom. Uh, so I think we'll take it away. I don't know where the best place is to start. Ed sent us three different files, um, revenue estimates and the overall departmental budgets, I believe, and there must have been one more in here somewhere, which I can't find at the moment. What was that on? Those are the main two things, right? So where shall we start? We'll wait till Ed gets set up over there. Just in general, how have your Finance Committee meetings been going? You met with a few others since we saw you a couple of days ago?
Yeah, we met yesterday.
Yeah, okay. Good.
Yeah, we met with, um, Ed doing the townwide budgets.
Mm-hmm.
Um, we met with Treasure Collector, and then we met with assessors.
Okay, good.
And they went pretty well. Um, nothing kind of out of the ordinary, I guess.
Mm-hmm, okay. Good. So I assume...
I noticed, um, so we got the new cherry sheet, proposed numbers today. But Ed, I was going to ask you, where is the library money on the...
The library money doesn't show up on the recap or on this.
It doesn't?
No.
Isn't the librarian, is it tuition or... There's two receipts that are on the cherry sheet, but they're also...
One is the library and one is school choice, correct?
School choice, yeah.
So they don't show up anywhere?
Right. The money going out or the money coming in?
Angel, feel free to wander up. Rini's not here tonight, so... Good. So where shall we begin with the revenue estimates? Estimated revenues? Is that where you'd like to begin?
I would like to know if we have a future in, like, the research phase?
Yes, I know. We were at Gotham in training. I think that's great.
So I'm assuming, um, this prior year, which I didn't go and look, um, today, the prior year levy limit of the 13, 305, 676 is, um, from the levy limit recap from the DLS website?
That is correct.
Okay. Two and a half percent should just be a straight calculation, new growth. Um, we did talk to the assessors last night about the new growth, and they seem fairly comfortable with 195. Um, you know, my hesitation to them is that if you overestimate that, you should be more on the conservative side because if you overestimate it, there's really no other place in the local receipts to make up that money if you balance your budget on it. So like if your local, if your new growth in here is 195 and it comes in at 165, the only other place you could probably wiggle some money, um, in terms of increasing it is if you were conservative on your, um, motor vehicle excise tax. Um, but other than that, unless you did 10, 10, you know, there's, it's really hard to be able to make up anything, you know, because everything is so tight.
Right.
You try to budget conservative, but to the point where, you know, you want to be able to give people as much as they can for expenditures. So they seemed pretty comfortable with that. Um, this exclusion, the debt exclusion, does that include the new monies that were added to the budget for the East Street Bridge?
Yes, it does.
It does?
Yes.
So the 281, 734 is for the East Street Bridge, Randall's Truck, the, if I can remember...
This building?
This building, yep.
The, uh...
All the miscellaneous stuff done at the Norris School?
Yes.
Yep, okay. All right. And the overlay of 125,000, did that, did you get that number from the assessors?
I actually got it from, uh, what we had used and what was on DLS, and I added the $5,000 to it for the, uh, Senior Work Off Program. The DLS had told us that was the right place to put it in the overlay.
It's where it should have went. It shouldn't stay in the expense report, which is what happened in '21. It probably never, anyway.
Could you explain the overlay? I don't think I understand that.
So basically, you can say, I'm going to, I'm going to, if you take this example, you're going to be able to charge people taxes in order to generate 13 million dollars in revenue.
Mm-hmm.
But you're going to have to subtract the abatements from that overlay.
Oh, okay.
It's called overlay allowance for abatements. They've gone back and forth on the name. But, um, do we know, probably not, how much is left in there currently for this year? Because that would affect...
Yeah, I'd have to...
How much you put in there?
Yeah, I'd have to go back and take a look. I seem to remember it being somewhere around, I think it was around $60,000, but I'd have to go back and take a look.
For '22 or that was what was left in '21?
That would be what was left in '21.
So if you had 60 left in '21 and you added whatever was...
I think it was 120.
120 appropriated, how much is left out of that? And then...
Carry in.
That gets carried forward, and so maybe you don't need 125? I don't know, just... Which would give you more revenues in order to balance the rest of the budget. So I guess we should...
So we need to check that?
Yeah, because we went up from '21 to '22. We went up 20,000 and then to go up another...
Um, yeah, I guess I don't know how much, how many, what's the tally of the abatement so far for '22? If they ha, if the assessors have any, um, cases with the ATB that would affect that? But I guess that would be a number you can just definitely look at. Because even if you take it down five or 10 grand, that's five or 10 grand you can put in a regular budget. So just a thought. Um, and they don't, they don't have you distinguish it by levy year anymore where they used to have, but now it's just one big pot of money?
One pot of money.
Yeah. Um, anyway, just thinking out loud here. You know, you can get any dime that you can, any dime that you can, I guess.
Mm-hmm.
Just seems, uh, yeah, okay. Uh, next is right off of the cherry sheet. Assessments. So I guess my biggest question is, we have 23 estimates in here, but we, we only have a half of a year actually posted in the ledger. So, you know, you have six months' worth of receipts. How, how can you judge what you think you might collect if you don't know what you've already collected? I guess is my question. Because that makes a... It makes a big difference.
Do we have, do we have, I mean, on that point, the last report, my memory says, the last thing that was in the system was one packet for January that was ready to go up. Do we have any idea if in the next 14 days, anything else in January, February, March, might be inputted into the system other than payroll?
I'd have to find out. It would, it would be on the revenue side that I would need to find out.
Yeah. But true, because he, yeah, he switched it over there.
And actually, actually, just about all of it through the end of December was pretty much on track at 50%. Obviously, the biggest piece that's volatile, although we haven't really seen any drop in it in recent years, is, you know, the motor vehicle excise tax is all basically, uh, or 90% of it is probably collected in March and April.
Ed, could you move it over so we can see the categories, the names of the... There, thank you.
You're welcome.
Again, I think I mentioned this last time. I'd be very careful with this cannabis tax and the cannabis impact fee. I mean, you don't even have one year of tax under our belt in order to be able to project what you're going to have next year. Um, that might be a sticking point with the...
I already talked to DLS on that.
And they said do it?
They said just be super conservative, which is, this is super conservative.
Have you, all right.
This is on the tax or on the impact fee, sorry?
This is the cannabis tax.
Mm-hmm.
Interesting, they changed their tune, but, okay. They usually, anyway. And how did you come up with, I mean, how, where did you derive those numbers from, I guess? How much have we collected in cannabis tax so far this year? You know?
We've collected more than is on the books, but the 3% also compares to our 3% impact fee, which is paid through our office. So I see those checks. So, I mean, through December, we had already received, I think it was $53,000 in the excise tax and $53,000 in the impact fee.
Now, the impact fee is... Is that impact fee, was that agreement part of the, like, I know in Westfield we have got some money...
It was the host country agreement. There was a host country agreement with an amount for the...
Right, right, right. But it, but is it supposed, like, there, we had a host agreement with HECA in Westfield, and part of that money was to go to drug education and awareness, which really shouldn't go to the general fund. It should be in a special revenue fund.
That's a separate payment.
That's separate, okay. I, that's why I'm asking, like, I wasn't sure where, if they...
Yeah, there's a se...
If they did this.
Separate $10,000.
Oh, so they did give something separate, okay.
Yes.
So, back on the cannabis tax. You're saying as of December, so if I look at the revenue reports for December, I'm going to see a line item that shows deposits?
Yeah.
You should, yes.
Do you know that you got one there, Ed? It should be 14, 1 something.
I do not.
All right, I have the revenue reports. I see the meals tax, I see the excise tax, only in motor vehicles, but I don't see it.
Because they, the state sends you the cannabis tax quarterly.
Is it in the state revenue where the meals tax comes in?
Um, it would come through Vendor Web, probably through there. It would come through Vendor Web, so...
Yeah, it's not on the regular vendor, uh, revenue report that I have.
Should be in there somewhere.
Well, it should be here. It should be in here somewhere.
Would be under General Fund, right?
Would be under, it should be listed under the state revenue numbers, but I don't know how they numbered the numbers, so...
Is that one Ellen would have sent us or Bradley? The revenue report? Did that come from Ellen?
Yes.
There's cannabis revenue under...
It's on the, on the...
Special Revenue, and that's 18,000.
Yeah, that's only the first payment of it. So there's been some that I'm aware of that came in after that.
But, but so that... But if it's in the Special Revenue Fund, it's not part of the General Fund.
So is that 18 grand for the, um...
Should it be in a regular General Fund line?
Or is that the money for the, um, you know, for the drug education and awareness piece?
No, that wouldn't be because that wasn't paid until, I know, after December.
So...
Yeah.
Is that 10 also in here? And then the eight is from...
No, the 10 wouldn't be in there because that revenue report only would record through December 31st.
Oh, and that came in January?
Yes.
Okay. So I guess we need to find out, um, if that 18, where that is coming from.
That 18 would be the first quarterly payment of the excise tax.
Of taxes, yeah. I believe. General Fund, I see.
Yeah, but because of the General Fund, why is it in a Special Revenue Fund? It shouldn't be in a Special Revenue Fund. It should be in the General Fund. So that's in a wrong place if that's what that is. If that's actually coming from the Vendor Web, from the state money, like you get the meals tax, then that, then that has to be changed because that's not right.
Okay, we'll move it.
So where does it go, Vicki?
It goes, uh, in the General Fund.
Goes into the General Fund, absolutely.
Because otherwise it's not going to show us free cash, like, at the end of the year.
It just...
14, 600.
It should be 0146, yeah.
Where Chapter 7 of the School, Transfission.
Also, I was wondering why on the revenue report, there's no earnings on investments, unless none of the reconciliations are done. But normally, when you enter the month's receipts, you would enter all the interest that was earned on the, on the individual accounts. And as of December, it's zero.
I would guess that those reconciliations have not been done yet, Ed.
That's an issue.
How can the revenue report be accurate as of December if the reconciliations aren't done? You know, and so no interest is entered?
Well, let me put it this way. The reconciliations are done through December. Perhaps the journal entries haven't been made.
But they would be packets?
But they would then packets that she would be entered, that would then posted.
Yeah.
And so earnings on investment in '22 was 8,000, and this has 15,000. And my guess is it's going to keep going down.
Yeah. Yeah, I don't know where 15,000 came from. I don't know what the actual was last year, but, I mean, interest rates have not risen.
Yeah. And they're drastically, the earnings that you gain, at least I see where we are is, you know, I see it too. It's, all of a sudden, you're like, it's cut in half.
Yep.
So we've dropped it only 2,000, that's what you're saying? We dropped it from 17 to 15, but, and you're saying as you're...
Well, I guess this 22 probably doesn't have the numbers that were, bless you, that were, um, in the recap piece, so...
I don't know, I don't...
Yeah, Bradley and I went over them, so they should.
So this 20, FY '22 estimate for earnings on investments on the spreadsheet says 17, but in the revenue it says 8.
I wonder if, like, the motor vehicle. Yeah, and then...
Yeah, I'll have to check on that, then.
On the 22 estimate for, like, motor vehicle, it says 992, 9.
Yep.
But on the estimate, on the revenue sheet, it says 965.
Estimate on the revenue sheet?
Yeah, estimated revenue, which should be the budget.
I'm not seeing that.
On the motor vehicle excise, the revenue report that Bradley sent.
I'll have to check on that.
I mean, if the revenue report, the estimated receipts and, um, soft write is correct, then we should update this sheet so that it's...
Right.
What was done in...
It needs to be the same, yeah.
Or update the revenue report.
Right, the general report.
Gotcha.
So then the other piece would be, um, you know, I'm looking at this departmental or the license and permits. There's 140. Sorry, I should have printed this.
That's okay.
See, I can't, I can't tell what's happening here if that's...
And also, like, here, the interest and penalties says 85,000, but yet what's in, on the spreadsheet here for interest and penalties was 70,000. So I don't really even know what we budgeted for '22 because this sheet says one thing and this sheet says another thing.
Well, in this other departmental, it says 68, 5, which is, I'm guessing, PEG programming? But there was a whole PEG programming, well, yeah, 68, 5.
Right.
What is that for? Because PEG programming is over here at 68. I thought maybe you guys put PEG programming in this one.
I don't know, but it's, then there's nothing posted against it.
289, 5. No, because that other departmental used to be, um, really nothing. It was just an actual...
I mean, the meals tax says 50,000, but on here it's 53,000 for the '22. So anyway, I, you know, if these numbers are, whichever numbers aren't right, the percentages aren't showing accurately either.
Where'd you see the PEG programming?
The PEG programming is under miscellaneous.
On page two of the revenue report, not the report that you're...
Oh, okay.
Not that, not that spreadsheet.
You know, what we should have asked last night, too, is if the, uh, who has the tax...
Oh, yeah, yeah. It would be whole yolk, water, because they do the... Anyway, I guess I'm just, um, it's just hard to, I think, predict because you, again, I don't know what the final was for '21. And two, if you only have half a year, it's hard to say, okay. If you have up till April, at least you can say, okay, I have three quarters of a year. I can kind of extrapolate in previous years what has been posted in the last couple of months and say, okay, like, for instance, building permits. You have $100,000 and you think, okay, we know we're going to have three new subdivisions. We're going to have that many more building permits. You can make a case for adding 10 or 15 grand with the explanation to the DLS to say, hey, we put extra in here even though we didn't collect it because we have three more, um, subdivisions that are coming in. And so they would probably accept that. Um, but what you can't do is have collected only 10 grand and put in 30 grand the next year without any explanation whatsoever.
Right.
They're going to be like, yeah, that's not going to happen.
Mm-hmm.
So, um, the school busing fees for Norris, are they still charging those? They must be charging them for out-of-district kids?
No.
No, not anymore?
We haven't charged school busing fees since 2017, I think. It was one year old.
Um, no, the out-of-district kids who came in school choice, if they took the bus, had to pay for the bus. But, so, that was because there was a shortfall. But I think the kids that come in, if they, like, live on County Road and they hop on the bus and, well, if they do the pickup, they pay for the bus. So, um, which, you know, the school collects it and usually would turn it over, so... Medicaid.
And then they have, what, 43 school choice, 43, 47?
Yeah, Medicaid was at 5,000, and that's budgeted for only 1,500. I don't know why.
It's only 1,300 and, uh, probably because that's all that was collected. That's one of those line items.
21, 21.
But those are one of those line items that the DLS, they really are, probably that and the cannabis tax are really adamant about not plugging that to balance your budget because you never know how much you're going to collect.
What, what line item or, or where would I see the, uh, the funds that are collected from the Water Department for services provided on the town site?
That would be, it's an enterprise fund.
Yeah, 61, Fund 61.
The, the ones that come into the town, the indirect costs?
Yeah.
There are going to be other underfunding sources in the revenue page. It's going to be on the bottom. But those get booked by a journal entry.
So they're not part of, they're not part of our revenue number that's in here?
You've got it here.
Yeah, that's on the bottom.
Line 69, you've got it.
Yeah, the 98, 869, and the 19, 24.
Right, so, all right, so for three, for three years, it's, it's been flat. And then you did the, the new calculation, and that increased it by 4,900?
Yeah, it's a difference of 49, almost, yeah, 4,900 for the Water Enterprise and 860 difference for Transfer.
Transfer Station.
Right. So what does that reflect, though? That reflects for the Water Enterprise. There, there was some, weren't there some increased water fees earlier in the year sometime? Did the water rates change?
Well, so...
A little bit?
I'm not an expert in this, but how it was explained to me is that there is a master spreadsheet out there that has, I don't know how many line items, but for example, has the person in the Treasurer's Collector's Office that does the wire department billing.
Mm-hmm.
Right, so if, I'll make this up. If there are 20 hours a week, maybe five hours a week get charged off to that account because that's what they're doing.
Right.
But that position, and again, I, I'm not the expert here because I'm catching up, but what this is telling me in '20 and '21, there were no cost of living adjustments to those wages because they wouldn't have done less hours.
No, I don't think the calculation was done. I think they just stayed with what was from before.
Right, and '21, just, I had just used what the year before was.
I got you. Right, and now we're going, all right, okay. So that 4,900 example, the increases in there would be the cost of livings that have gone up. And it's not just that, there's other payroll dollars.
There's payroll dollars in there. There's, I think, square, square footage for equipment in the highway garage. There's benefit costs, there's insurance co, and... there's benefit costs, there's insurance cost and insurance costs in there.
OPEB should be in there for the water.
Whether that got updated or not, I don't know, but-
Did I already say this about the motor vehicle?
And this revenue that we see from water, what portion they reimburse the town for the services that we, they receive?
Right, same for the transfer station.
Yeah, but. In return, how often is that re-calculated or do you just keep adding 2% on a year?
No, it should be recalculated every year.
Okay.
So basically, I think the, the tough part with water is that you use it based on the budgeted anticipated wages-
Right.
Which is in the water budget, but you're not going to actually use all those. You know, they might, so Tom might put in 50 grand because he's going to need Todd and, and Siz to, or whoever's going to come work with him to do water, that, that gets paid out of the enterprise funds, gets charged directly to the enterprise funds. When you do this budget, it's based on the anticipation, you're going to use the entire $50,000 worth of wages and you charge like the fringe rate, which would include, you know, vacation and insurances for those people that work part-time at like a 36% and 36% rate. But what we found, at least when I was here, when we did that with Tom, you know, you put in 65,000 bucks and the town was getting charged the $65,000, not $65,000, but the, the salaries for that 65,000 bucks, but they didn't actually use them. So what we did was we would go back at the end of the year, do that same calculation again with the actuals and that's where the actuals would get charged directly to-
But I'm talking about like accounting services?
Yeah, so that would always be a percentage. That's part of that. So you, you'd have to discuss with those departments how much of your time you spend on water. How much do you spend on- Transfer station?
And how did they, do they track it on their timesheets?
No.
If a highway employee goes over to the water department?
That gets charged directly to the water.
But as far as the people in the collector's office, they, I mean, it's so intermingled.
Yeah.
You can't, you can't say, I've spent this much time on water because you do it all at the same time. You know, you're-
Yeah.
Really, you're opening mail, you're doing-
You know, 5%, 10%, you know, 5%, 8% of their time, 2% of their time.
But like the retirement office too, you know, what, what, the, the retirement assessment is based on aggregate salaries. So now that there's two people in the water department that are full-time and the salaries have increased, our assessment has increased, so the water should be being appropriately charged, you know, for whatever the percentage that their salaries are of the aggregate salary report.
And Randall's time, whatever he spends on the transfer station, you know, gets, is charged there. So, you know.
I was just kind of looking at the overhead costs, that's all.
Yeah, 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 so, so even at one point in time, we added the calculation of the OPEB piece and then added the actual insurance and then added like the liability insurance because they have a building and you can only kind of do it based on what they're square, you know, there was a, whatever the formula calculation that I came up with, whether you keep it the same, it's up to you guys, but, you know, we added all those pieces to it, so you just have to redo all those calculations. Now, the other piece with those are, you should write up a document on how you calculate it and send it to those departments and they're supposed to sign off that they're okay with how you do it. That should be part of the audit, but. So it's not, those don't seem unreasonable, but.
Ed, do you know, on the motor vehicle excise tax, I mean, if we go back to, I don't know, 2020 actual was 986.
Yeah.
2021 estimated was 992-9. I don't know what the, what the 21 actual was. 2022 was estimated at the same 992-9, but yet for 23, it's dropped to 980. I mean, generally, the excise tax doesn't go down.
My memory, and I'd have to double check, was the actual for, I thought, 21, ended up around 987, but I'll double check that.
So does that-
That's why knowing what this year was today, or, you know, what the commitments were at least.
I can find out what the commitments are.
And then if you only collected 987 versus 986, was your receivables for 21 that much higher at the end of the year? Because that would mean there's been just a delay-
Delay, right.
The capturing of the-
Right. Which could, which could be the case because I seem to also remember that even though the largest part of the commitment doesn't go out till like the end of February, I think by December, there was a little over $200,000 already in motor vehicle and excise taxes, but I'll double check on that too.
978.
211, okay.
It's a small number, but I wonder what's going on with boats.
Boats has always been very small, yeah.
Well, we've only collected $75.
Well, so they hadn't billed, they probably hadn't billed them yet. So I don't know, is that something that's being done or not?
They were.
It were being, it was being done.
It was and then it wasn't and then-
Since Martha's been gone, I don't know.
I don't know.
Billing for the boats. They're billing for the boats.
And then in here, you have $200,000 for ambulance.
Yes.
Yeah, let's talk about that.
Which is made up of actually two different components. $130,000 for the operating expenses and roughly, roughly $70,000 for the ambulance debt payment.
So the debt payment, well, I guess you're talking 68 and then the interest, so.
Yeah.
So, again, Ed, on that, $200,000 and $70,000 is, is for the debt, is that right?
Correct.
I don't know, I don't know.
And the 134?
What?
Yeah, the rest, the 130, I didn't hear you.
For operating expenses.
Because we took a bunch out at the last town meeting.
Which hasn't been recorded on the expense report.
So we have no idea how much is left in the ambulance receipts at this point either.
In last year's number.
Yeah.
I'll double check. My memory is like 252,000.
After we did the last town meeting and we transferred money out, there was still 100 or 200,000?
That's my memory, but I'll double check it.
Because the $68,000 that was transferred out is not posted in the expense report.
It isn't?
It is not.
Okay.
Under the debt service?
No, it's under the debt service, but you need to, you-
Yeah, you have to, you gotta do an entry to transfer it out of the ambulance receipts too.
Yeah, you have to post it as an expenditure to the ambulance receipts.
Yeah, because I thought there was-
And so-
We voted, I'm sorry, at the town meet, special town meeting, we took the 68,000 first.
And then we took more.
Well, right, but, and it was less than the ask.
Right.
Because the ask plus the 68 did not, there wasn't enough money to cover it, which was under 100 and we went down to 25.
I think it was 25. I think the motion originally might have been written as 30,000 and then we went down.
Right, and they got it backed up off the floor.
Yeah, I think it was 20 or 25 is what finally came in there, from what I remember, but, yeah.
And I, I think I had something else going on.
So it makes sense.
So, I guess, do we know what the balance is at the end of 21?
For?
For the ambulance receipts reserve?
I'll take, I'll double check on that for you and let you know.
Because.
According, again, you know, on April 7th, Bradley gave me revenue report 2021 from 7/1/20 to 6/30/2021. And so the ending number on that report of actual revenue for ambulance fees was 168,065. So if we take 68,000 out for debt, that would have been 100. But that would have been where we ended the year, then we would have taken some money at the start of the budget, right?
Right.
Which would have reduced that 100 down.
So that's on the expense report?
No, this is revenue.
Same one Donald's looking at?
But that one was 21.
Oh, 21, oh, okay.
Didn't you ask for the end of 21?
Yeah, and that, yeah, but that's just the revenues that got added to the balance from before. So you need to look at the, the expense report. Do you have an expense report from 21? So. Okay, so at the end of 21, and I don't know if they're done closing the books for 21, but there's 184,575,39.
Of expense.
Of a balance left that you can appropriate from. So whatever you took away from town meeting for 22.
As part of the budget?
As part of the budget.
And the special town meeting.
And the special town meeting.
So we had already taken 100 out for the regular, I think.
68 for the debt.
And then another 30,000?
Which, which was backed up or justified by new receipts that came in.
Right.
Between opening the year and when we have the special town meeting.
Right, but it's still pretty close.
It's close, yeah.
To say that there's, there's not going to be 200,000, I doubt, in there on July 1st to transfer. I mean, we can budget it, but you're going to be taking it.
You can't take the money out unless it's actually received.
Right.
And that 200 is above and beyond the 68 that we already planned on taking for the debt or that 68?
It's including the 68.
For next year's, you know what I mean?
This would include next year, not this year.
So 132 for the-
130, yeah.
Pay to day out.
130 for date, right.
62, yeah.
And these are, this is, we've collected 110?
I mean, I know some things just can't happen and I accept that, you know, but if, I guess if there's any way between the, the two offices, if they're able to-
At least look at the bigger ones, yeah.
You know, get, get some more, you know, like, again, I don't, I don't know how the ambulance receipts come in. I'm assuming it's an ACH and it probably comes from a company and it's probably sporadic because we use a billing company. But could those easily be pulled out of the deposits and-
I'll find out.
Book through or, and I also understand that that office is currently down a half a person. So I, I get it, but if we're going to, if we're going to keep that 200, it'd be good to see another document that kind of gets us closer to support it.
Sure.
It's just really hard to make educated decisions when we don't have all the-
So that had, what did I say, 184,575, and that was the end of the fiscal year?
Yeah.
So then you're going to take 100 out, you're going to take 68 out, which leaves you with like 15 grand. And then you took more money out after that. So as, so that would have been the balance as of July 1st. And then what you received between that and whenever the town, special town meeting was, would eat up some, the 68 would eat up some of that 110,000 that's been received. I don't think you're going to get 200 more thousand bucks.
And the special town meeting was in December, right? December 21.
So.
Well, we don't, yeah, we don't know exactly how much was in there.
I mean, this is as of December, you have 110, so.
We'll double, we'll double check on that.
Thing is, without them being, without the accounts being balanced, there's, it's possible that something was missed.
Yeah.
That you don't catch until you finish your-
So, I guess, I guess the next question would be, how close is that person to actually being done with the balances and being comfortable with what the balances were for all the special revenue funds and the, and the school funds and the trust funds? That they can carry those balances forward to 22?
Very close to being done, so I'll, I'll see if any of those specific funds are actually already balanced out.
I mean, it's easier if you do them all at once, but, because then, you know, CPA is the other one. People are going to look to take money out of CPA and if those balances aren't carried forward and you don't do those journal entries, you don't know what your balances are. So I think 200 is-
And is the thought still, I mean, what is today? Thursday.
Thursday.
So it's been 24, 48 hours. Is there any change in your position that Lisa will get those documents off and be ready to get them off to DOR by Friday?
You mean tomorrow?
I don't-
No, no.
Okay. So mid-next week maybe?
Yes.
Okay. And then? And then we give them a week to, to turn it around and get it back to us? That puts us in the-
That's being presumptuous that they have that time and that they're willing to do that.
Right.
I have faith in the government.
That's a great guy, but.
I know.
So then if that happens and say they turn it around, the warrant has to be posted on April 25th or 26th.
Right.
And I don't know how you can sign off on the warrant when you don't know what those balances are. Because you can appropriate free cash to stabilization, to OPEB, because you don't know what those balances are. How can Randall and the water department, if they use those retained earnings to balance their budget, if you don't know what that is, how can you put that warrant article on with no numbers? And then on top of it, they say they get done next week or whatever and you have to use them, June 30th is it? You, there's no, they're not, because you turned them in, like they're going to let you carry it over until like September. June is it and you're done, and then it starts all over again. So.
So is, is there any, I don't even know if this is possible. Pick a number, 300,000. Say we reduce ambulance receipts to 100, so there's 100 we got to make up and say we're short 178, so 278, 300, whatever the number is. Is there any, is there any way if we just declare lost revenue, that we can grab 300,000 ARPA and stick it in here? And, and let this stuff play out, which ultimately, if there is any surplus, it then rolls out into free cash, right?
Theoretically, yes.
You know, I'm asking, do you think that's an option or should we not even consider it? Knowing that we have a week and a half left, I, I don't know.
Is it an option? Absolutely.
But I don't know that you can appropriate money from ARPA, but well, I guess you, good, I'd have to read the rules again.
Can you do that to fill in?
For rev, it's revenue law, but really-
But to balance your budget, I don't-
To balance your budget, you, you can't put it in stabilization or any of that kind of stuff. So you'd have to move, you'd have to pass the budget and then move your expenses-
Right.
Over. You can't take ARPA money and say, hey, we're going to balance our budget with that.
No.
No, you're not allowed to.
Because it actually doesn't take an appropriation.
Right.
Just, yeah, it's either the mayor or the select board.
So would it help us to know, I mean, whatever Lisa's putting in for, for the DLS, to have, even though it's not approved, certified, whatever?
Know what that number is.
To know what those numbers are so we can have a productive discussion on Tuesday when we meet again? I mean, can we get something that would-
If we can get them by then, sure.
You know, because I think otherwise, we're just sort of theorizing.
I would think once she turns it in, she could, she would provide you a copy anyways, right?
Right, but we might need it a day or so before. We're planning on meeting on, we scheduled a meeting for next Tuesday, the 19th, so. I mean, just in case she doesn't get it in on Tuesday, I mean, but just so that we've got some of these relatively sure figures to work with from the internal point of view so that we don't get out over our skis a little bit too far.
So it's a case of they're going to have to, and I don't know whether this person's done this, if they've done the combined balance sheet, if they've done the balance sheet checklist, those are pretty much fine-tooth combs that they go through. That takes a little bit of time. And then, once those are done, then they'll go through and proof out the free cash page. So there's a page that you can do and then there are free cash proof. Then they're going to have to prove out your undesignated fund balance, which is on your balance sheet, to make sure that it matches pretty much what you think you should have in free cash. So that takes a little bit of time. It's not like a two-day, unless that's what he did all day for two days. It would be a lot of, because the thing is, is that they're going to have questions.
Yeah.
They're going to bring them back and then you're going to have to go back and forth to explain all those things and if that person who's doing those pages aren't readily available, it slows down that process.
Yeah, any, any thoughts, Ed? I mean, you're, you're working with them, certainly closer than we are in terms of what they're-
All I can do is ask, so I will do that.
But for purposes of just, if we talk about some temporary revenues, what I think I'm hearing from John is that we should maybe be a little bit more conservative and- Some temporary revenues, what I think I'm hearing from John is that we should maybe be a little bit more conservative and knock that. 19142 down by. The total, the total revenues here? You're thinking about knocking the total down by?
Well, I, I, I'd prefer to figure out a way to go in the other direction.
Well, no, I agree, but I mean. But you were, I thought you were saying to.
Well, I was just thinking, if there was another way to do it, if there was another pot of money that could be used or another item, then.
But I think that's, well, we have to look at the ARPA rules again, but I don't think you can use it just to balance your budget, I'm pretty sure I read that somewhere.
But I think that is, if you take the straight ARPA rather than the revenue loss portion of it.
Right, we have to declare it as revenue loss.
Yeah.
And you know, ex amount, which I think we could find a couple line items and say, look, here's our five-year trend before COVID. We were here, we're now here, there's the example of revenue loss.
Okay, maybe.
And declare those two.
Right.
Whatever they are.
Yeah, maybe, okay.
And then move the money, right.
But I thought as long as you were under 10 million, you didn't have to have.
You don't have to justify it.
You don't have to justify it. We've got up to 10 million, we can.
In theory, we won't.
Yeah. They just.
Well, you will still get a single audit because it's over 750,000 bucks, so.
Right, exactly.
And whatever you do, don't pay the audit fees out of ARPA or CARES Act money, because then you have to go out to bid.
Right.
There's a whole different procurement piece, because it's federal funded, it is paying for it, so.
Okay. All right, any further discussion on this particular? One, I mean, things to watch out for, I think if, you know, we've talked about a few things that are good.
And I guess maybe, I'm just, I'm just doing my thought process here. Is there anything within the general fund operating budget that could be classified as ARPA? And therefore it shouldn't be on the expenses here. It should be over on ARPA.
Yeah, you could bring down.
Well, if you take revenue loss, you can just about do any of them.
Okay, which would be easier than trying to nitpick through.
It would be, yeah.
Correct.
So what you do. Thinking outside the box. I guess you, I mean, I guess if you. Were to. Take. Appropriate money from free cash, if it's certified now that to reduce the tax rate. Then in 22, you have expenditures that you can move over to ARPA. And that money's just gonna fall back into free cash for 22.
The following year.
Yeah.
Right, which, right, which is how you then get to, if there's a big enough number, you then go and apply and just pay off your unfunded liability.
Right.
Or your pension after it becomes certified as part of free cash in the next year. Because then you can do whatever you want with it.
Right.
When you get that far.
Correct, correct.
I'm sold.
There we go.
I still think we need to look closely at the expense budget. I don't think that we should just say, oh, well, budget one's gonna go, and we'll just find the money somehow, I mean, I think that we need to.
Right.
But I guess you gotta start with, like, okay, if you're gonna take 200 grand out of here. And you're at 18 and some change, then you know how much you have to take out of the expense piece.
Right.
All right.
With this, with this, well, you probably sent it to us, but with this bottom number of 19142 right now?
Yes.
What's that do with column one budget that you have it?
It's on there, I think it's like a $75,000 deficit. But on the flip side of that is, I will say that. Going back and look at some of the numbers. I think we're at least one student short on vocational tuition to where I might feel comfortable, so that's. That would be 18,000 if we added one more student in there, but hang on, let me switch screens here.
Yeah, you've got a variance now of 73,567? On the, on the regular, on the main budget?
It was in the ballpark from what I remember.
Yeah. This is the other sheet that Bradley sent me.
But I think, like, the unemployment. The unemployment number, I think, should go back down to eight, unless we know that there's something coming up, like, I don't think that needs to be at 20.
That's, that's where I was going last night at the meeting, so.
It doesn't look like the health insurance number got changed on this latest one I got.
Really?
Says 999.
Okay, then I'm gonna have to check, oh.
Bradley sent one, and it was changed, but this, this latest one that you sent doesn't have it.
That's the one I got from Bradley, though.
Was it changed down or up?
Down.
Yeah. Because the wish list column is 982, right? Are we looking at the same one, the group health insurance?
When, Jen, when we met with her last night.
Yeah, she sent a new sheet. She sent a new sheet to Bradley.
Right.
And that's the one I worked on, and basically all I did on that was. Actually put in the, just switched the revenue numbers.
Right, so the one that came up to us, the wish list is smaller than budget one.
Right.
Yeah, so that 999 number is.
I don't know why that happened.
And the retiree number is wrong too, because that went from 210 to 207.
That's weird.
Yeah, both the, the group health insurance things are.
So I mean, that's like 30 grand, right there, changing those three. A little over 30 grand.
Yeah, 73,567. So now.
It carried over to that front page total, didn't it? It was linked, I thought.
Take a look at the actual workbook. It should be back at the beginning, that would be employee benefits.
972.
972, 288, well, that's retirement. Yeah, 999, 999. I don't know what happened there.
If you, can you just click on the total?
Sure.
No, no, right where you are at.
Total of that column. Because in. Go back there. Go back to where you were on the.
The benefits.
On the benefits.
Yeah.
Because on mine, it says.
34.
Yeah, it says 2 million 5.
It's a hardcoded.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Hard typed.
Yeah.
Because that, right, that comes up to 2.5 million.
Yeah. So that didn't get linked somehow to the front sheet, maybe?
Well, or 2/3, 2 million 334 is the correct accurate, accurate number after you change those other numbers.
Right.
Yeah, so the health insurance should be 982, 287, 76, and the retiree, 207, 961.
Okay. Did you guys change anything on the unemployment?
I didn't do it yet, but we, I think it should go back down to eight.
Yeah, 20 seems pretty high, based on, I mean.
I mean, the only time in the past that we've increased it was when we knew. Like, the school was cutting staff, or they were cutting percentages or whatever, right.
We knew that we had people that were gonna be claiming it, right?
Yeah, so now there's a $42,000 issue. On budget one, 200,000, and budget two.
And hopefully. Bradley didn't have to recreate the wheel, because if he looked at previous years, these were already, are linked up together.
Hope he'll get there.
Come on.
Oh, but they're not gonna be in here.
So, just so I can get this right, so the group health instead of the 999, 328, should be what you said?
982.
287, 0.76. It's, it's the, oh, it's what's in wish list three.
Yeah, okay.
The actual numbers, and then just change the unemployment from 20 to eight.
Yep.
And brought this 207, but what, what did you think retirement contribution was, the 972?
Uh, yeah, that was. The retirement number should be correct, and it's the one-time payment.
And the correct number is 972?
That's what she said, yeah.
Okay.
That's yesterday. That's not it.
Can I see your report from 21, the end of 21? Your expense report, sorry. Thought I had it saved, but I guess I didn't. I just wanna see.
Now, did the unemployment go up $12,000 just? In addition to the rate going up because of this fraud thing we were exposed to?
I, I think that was the initial. Logic or thought process behind when they were putting this together, and December, January was to bump it up, and now. They've had time to look at it and get their hands around it.
Okay, because it's like 7200 dollars so far.
Right.
I asked her, okay.
I know last night, Ed, you were talking about technology. Equipment you increased for some computers.
Yes.
That needed to be replaced.
Yeah.
So I'm wondering, I think it was back in 19, or was it 20? They had taken money out of capital for town hall PCs and software. And as of the end of 21, only 2900 bucks got used, so there's $5,000 left in there that you could use for those computers potentially, and take it out of the budget.
I, I'll double check, I believe there's less than that. I thought we had taken that down just about to empty, but I could be wrong.
So this year's expense report, where am I here? Well, it's not on 22's report at all, so just a thought. That way you could take that money out of the budget and just use.
Well, I'll take a look, because I know we have replaced some computers out of that this year, so I don't know if they got charged to the wrong account or not.
These would be desktop, not laptops, huh?
I mean, it didn't matter, it was just, it was just town hall PCs, we, I think we did it in 19.
Because we got a bunch of laptops through the CARES money, so that was separate.
But, you know, those people who, like. Judy or Ellen, you know, they're not working from home per se, but. So to do the CARES Act piece for those, not really, but these could be paid out of this capital item?
I mean, we also, like, this is my work computer.
Yeah.
It's a laptop, that's what we got, and we just dock it to our big monitor, and so that's.
Yeah. That's what we got for the 13 laptops that we bought for CARES money.
Yeah, but it's like, it's my PC at work too, I mean, I'm not.
So the other thing is, I mean, this goes back to the IT, so we, I don't know what PCs. But that whole plan is now, but I mean, the P, when you, when you think of the PC, the tower.
Now they're just a little.
Yeah, a little box.
Yeah, a little box.
Yeah. Yeah.
I mean, you.
I know when, before I left. I know Joyce, you still had the tower, which is now Ellen's, but she had. Northeast IT come in, and they just updated the tower, the windows and the tower and everything, so. Not to say that it shouldn't be replaced, but I guess I was just thinking that money's still sitting there, and if we haven't used it. And then we maybe should use it for the computers and take that money out of the budget. It's not a ton, but, you know what I mean?
It's still sitting in capital, you're saying?
It is, along with the server money that's been there since 18, so.
Not only that, but if we do have any one-time expenses that are in here. That we could justify spending, even though free cash isn't certified. If there was a way to pay for some of those items out of free cash before June 30th, even if there was another meeting.
Meeting, yeah.
Then we could take that, take that out of here and as a one-time expense. I'm, I'm not, I don't wanna use free cash to balance the budget, and I'm not recommending that in any way. But if there's one-time expenses that are built into this that aren't gonna be reoccurring, we could do that.
It's a good idea.
Yeah, I'm gonna have to go back and see what happened when Bradley sent out the second one with the update for the 32,000 with the debt. That's when the 999 showed back up.
Yeah, because if you put in the 8,000 instead of 20, and you put in 982. Instead of that 999, I mean, I'd have exactly the right figures, but that's still 2 million 491. Unless there were some other changes to be made there, so it's still, that total, total number is not.
Was there stuff that Randall has, or the fire department has, or?
That was not a, a sum total on the.
Yeah, here's, here's the 32,000 added in for the debt, but when you go, for whatever reason, when you go back to the employee benefits.
Right.
That you buy out or print or something, you know?
It's not a, it's not a.
Bradley's coming in tomorrow.
It's not a formula at the bottom there, it was a hard number.
That I'm working with him, so.
No.
I'll go over this and see. See what happened to it and update it and send it out to you again.
Yeah. Maybe when you send things out again, if you could just highlight in yellow or something what is changed, so we can understand. What cells have been changed, just be easier to look at. I'm getting lost in the various pages here.
Yeah, I know, yeah.
Yeah, I've been, I've been trying to keep my hands off of it.
Yeah, well, that was a question that for Bradley.
Yeah.
This, this question might have got answered last night, but can somebody just refresh, did, can somebody refresh my memory? And reserve on the wish list going up to 20?
I, I, I did that, I did that.
But I figured the question would probably come up last night.
Yeah.
Why? I know you told me at one point.
Only because the volatility in the electric, the natural gas, the diesel and the gasoline fuels. I said, you know, let's just look it over and make, that was my way of making a little note.
Okay.
I guess why, well.
And have you, did you meet with the assessors?
We did.
What, what are your feelings on the wage adjustment request? Or you haven't gotten there yet? Only because it's a 44% increase, when I'm going now, looking at the differences.
I mean, we haven't met to.
Discuss it.
Discuss it, but I, I mean, I. I think that they're gonna hopefully be able to find someone for that amount. I mean, honestly. I don't, you know, they've been trying for months now to hire someone for a less amount, and they, and they can't. You're not gonna attract anyone, so it is what it is, it's what you have to pay.
That's a combination of adjusting the wage plus increasing the hours, right?
No, right now.
It's just wage?
Well, I don't know if it's gonna be.
That was supposed to be, the 60 was supposed to be going to 40 hours a week.
So it'd be both?
I guess there would be some, or 37 and a half, that's, that's how Lori was, I think, but she used to do it. In four days, you know, or whatever, however she put the hours in, so she wasn't necessarily here five days.
And then there's two, there was like an hour or two for meetings that would be included in, in that piece.
But the conservation commission wage is new, and that's in here for 19,000.
Right.
And that's part-time, 19 hours or less?
Yeah, I think it was around 19, I forget how much it was per hour.
I mean.
It was like 14 hours a week, was it, or something like that, or?
It was between 10 and 19.
I'm not saying that it's not something that we need, but I feel like we need to be retaining the people that we have. And the, the. The employees, you know, the staff that we have and making sure that. I don't know, before we just go take on somebody else, that's, I mean.
Yeah, I mean, look at Lucy's salaries, at 41,000 bucks. That's ridiculous, you know, it's, she does a lot of work. You know, those people who are quote-unquote department heads who are in charge, they should be getting. You know, those people who are quote-unquote department heads who are in charge, they should be getting them. And I know you can't do it all at once, but you should, again, you're, you don't wanna give 15, you know, 19 grand-
There is a 15% increase in there for her for conserva-
But, and, and also you've got-
Oh, the second one. Yeah, 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 I got you.
Randall, too. I mean, he's got how many guys under him? And then you've got the water superintendent who's got one person under him that makes a lot more money.
Well, I, I, I think it's well-established and accepted by everybody within town hall, I won't speak for the voters, that there's inequity within that has just rottened over time.
Yeah.
And definitely the commitment to try and figure out ways to close those gaps. I mean, that's definitely there, so.
Well, I guess that that's my only concern in, in seeing a new position added is that, you know, how does that, how does that speak to the current employees who feel like they're not being compensated as they should be when we hire a new person?
No, and I'm just, I mean, Joy can speak to it better because she's the, the rep to Concom, but I know for a fact with a volunteer board and the kinds of regulatory work they've gotta do, it's, it's not nothing, you know, in terms of the hours that they have to do, their site visits when there's wetlands, questions or violations. I mean, it's, it's really real. They're out there on Saturday morning doing site visits. And so that's new, and I think the planning one is new, right, as well? That's a contractor for planning board.
And we had a part-time planning, I mean, we had a part-time conservation person with the grant from East Hampton, and we shooed them away.
Well, whatever happened, I know we did, but-
I know, I'm just saying, so we had that and we could've been kind of working off of that for a little while.
Well, it didn't work for whatever reason, and I'm not sure if it was the way it was set up or what, but it didn't work. So, but the reality is the work has only gotten worse with higher regulations that have come from the state. So it's not that there's not work to do and more, you know, more issues that we have in town, but, yeah.
Yeah, I don't think, from, from my perspective, to me, it's not an either-or, right? I don't, I don't think, but here and with the money, yeah, we have to make choices. So, um, and I agree, I, I think that I, me personally on the board, I, I, we have a duty to, to our current employees to make sure that they're getting paid fairly. Um, but I also, as the, someone who has been on the conservation commission and is their liaison sees how much work they put into it, and, and it's a, they need a full-time job. I mean, a full-time employee, really, to keep up with it.
And it's hard to find them. We had trouble in Westfield trying to find someone. We had someone who left and they finally, after six months, finally found someone that was willing to come in. And, you know, it's, it's hard, all around in whatever municipal position that you have, you know?
Well, I think some other town, I forget if it was Whately or somebody, did a combination of, I think it's conservation agent and planning or economic development or something. I mean, they had a, a full-time, you know, an FDE, but it was split, you know, maybe not quite half-half, but, you know, trying to, trying to balance out those kinds of separate needs. And same, you know, plan has definitely got, you know, their, their levels of, uh, regulations to follow, too. But, I mean, it may be that, you know, we can figure out other ways. I mean, I, I would like to support both of those, but I, I totally agree that we've got a, a duty to try and figure out how we can make all of our ends meet. And there may be options. I mean, again, it's not, it's a Band-Aid, but, you know, there might be a way to cover the conservation agent out of ARPA.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
You know, and do that, and then work again over the two years, work toward something more permanent somehow, you know?
It's developing the plan. I mean, last year was a step in one direction.
Right.
Some people were okay with it, some people didn't care one way or the other, some people were enraged.
Right.
This year, again, you know, it, you're looking at a different group of employees to address.
Sure, yep.
Of course, if their money goes up, they're gonna be happy, the people that-
Well, and we've done more, too, to, to get people up to minimum wage, which we didn't have to do as, as a municipal, you know, entity, right? We didn't have to put people up to 15 bucks an hour for the state.
With another one.
Well, no, but I mean, no, I'm just saying that, you know, that, that was a little bit more of an increase than we were last year. So it's like every year we're-
We're going there.
Yeah, we're getting there, exactly, exactly. But not, not there yet, absolutely.
But that's also sometimes the way of public government.
Right.
You know, I just got a letter in the mail today from the office, from the IRS about a, a request that we sent in on September 16th of 2019. They just received it. Good thing. Good thing I didn't hold off and file on those corporate tax returns.
Really? So where, where else, I mean, if, if we're looking down through this budget, so we know we've got a couple of formula errors here, but is there anything else that really super stands out in that FY budget one to anybody, just so that we can maybe zero down our discussion for Tuesday a little bit and get more detail if we need to?
I mean, with, with those, with those three adjustments, and, and they could be fine-tuned, but if, if, I, I took the numbers that were in fiscal year three. Now, I missed the debt. Was there an increase in debt?
Yes, but it's gonna be offset, offset because it's debt exclusion debt with an increase on the revenue side.
Yeah.
$32,000 estimate for interest for the East Street Bridge.
Got put on there.
Yep. So it's currently in there?
It got added today.
It was added today, but then it's gonna be offset by an increase in-
Which I did on the revenue side.
It's in this one, I think, right? Yeah, it's in this one, yeah.
I see it. Okay, so, well, well, that makes it even better solved in theory. Net zero.
That's zero.
Right. But it's only, right now, it's only in here on one side because we're not looking at revenue.
Well-
Or is it in, is, is it, it's not-
It's in the revenue number.
It is in the $19,142.
Correct.
So if I take it out of there, I gotta take it out of the bottom. All right, so it still doesn't change the variance. So the variance is $42,000. So if you look at the, the part-time and conservation and the increase in assessor's office, you're almost there.
But the, the thing, if we don't fill that position in the assessor's office, we're gonna be losing money in new growth. I mean, in like the boat bills, if, if all this stuff that's not really being done, 'cause they're only doing what they have to do to stay afloat. If we don't get somebody into that position who is competent-
Right.
-and is gonna do the work, then the town is gonna suffer overall.
Is it exempt or non-exempt post that they're asking for? Or what is it currently?
I believe it was exempt position.
But we've never paid it overtime.
No, because it was exempt. They weren't, they weren't paid overtime.
And there was some talk at one point making it a salary position.
So if you make it salary, the hours are mute. This is the salary, here's your job description. As long as this work gets done, who cares whether you spend an hour here or you spend 50, 80 hours here?
Well, 'cause just like in a lot of departments, there's gonna be busier times and not busy, you know?
Right, but I think the mentality, it doesn't matter whether you're hourly or salary, every, my understanding is, the general thought is everybody opts as if, operates as if they're hourly. I get a salary, but, oh, it's whatever time town hall closes, 3 o'clock, it's time for me to leave. But no, your salary is to do, that you agreed to is to do this job.
To do the job itself, yeah.
Whether it's 30 hours or 90 hours to get it done, to your point, you know, it, it ebbs and flows, right? You've got some weeks when it's easy and some weeks when it's not.
Sure.
So if it's salary, I don't really, I, I don't wanna go down the argument of how many hours it is. It's, it's, you know, but I, I within would shift over to this is how much we have to pay to get a competent person to perform all these tasks. And if they're a superstar and they get it done in 16 hours?
More power to them.
God bless them. But then it's up to the Board of Assessors to ensure that all that's being done with oversight now.
But it is really true. I mean, I think Don is really right. I mean, with new growth and, I mean, this is the front end of our, of our revenue in town. If we, if we don't have people right there doing what they need to do.
If the tax rate is not set when it needs to be and the bills go out late, I mean-
It's why they have the A. It's assessor.
Right.
Beginning of the alphabet.
It's very, very important and-
Yeah, no, absolutely, absolutely.
The collector can't do her job if the assessors don't do their job, so.
Correct, yep.
Yep.
So, okay. All right, is there more to look at tonight? Are we, where are we going with this? Without belaboring the, the budget too muchly here?
Well, since I have, Bradley and I have to update this anyway to put those other numbers back in there.
Yeah, and just be sure that everything's-
That got changed. We'll check that, and I will also make some marks and identify some areas that I think the select board and finance should look at as far as possible reductions or whatever.
Right, and, and on the revenue side, you're gonna see what, if anything, we can find for a follow-up, whether it's commitments on the excise tax.
Yep.
And then we just wanna review ambulance receipts year-to-date, see if we can keep those revenue numbers there or not, right?
Right.
I think those were the big things. And the, the cannabis tax, I, I understand and agree with what Vicky's saying. I also hear what you're saying, that you think we're already over $80,000 for the year.
But it'd be good to check those numbers, though. Check the numbers on cannabis and also the earnings on investment, right?
Yeah, I, I'm convinced in, let's see, three and a half years that we won't have the impact fee anymore, so. I mean, e, e, even with, and does it disappear through the legislature before that? I don't know, but, you know, it's another thing to keep in the back of our minds and also another reason, okay, even if it's gonna be here for five years and not using it all, because when it disappears, it's gonna be a falloff. It won't have a direct replacement.
And then the, the only other line that I, that I would look at, and this is probably an assessor question, but is, is the, uh, the less the overlay. Because if I go on the DLS community dashboards, it shows our current overlay as, that we're sitting at $101,000 already in there.
Is that the end of last year?
Yes, 'cause this year's numbers aren't in yet.
You would've filled out that, that overlay schedule and you did the recap, so.
So-
It was actually DLS that drove up our overlay number a couple of years ago.
Right.
Requiring us to go up.
They did?
Yep, you were here.
I don't remember that.
Oh, yeah.
Can't remember everything.
No.
We're not, we're not 20 anymore.
I usually do. I have, um, uh, one of the other things that kinda stuck out, and I just noticed it for some strange reason, the independent audit went up to $36,000 bucks.
Oh, yeah.
And, and actually, I gotta, I have to adjust that, 'cause it's $36,000 for the '21 audit, and then it drops back down for '22, I think it is. I'll double-check on that.
It's 22, I thought it, they went from 36 to 31.
Yeah, didn't drop down much.
Fiscal year, yeah, for fiscal year '22.
In the following year, they drop it another five, but-
So it still is going up, a total of 10 from '21 to '31 over.
And that's still Melantin?
Yeah.
So far. Yep, we're at the end of the contract with them.
So this 36 number should go to 31?
Yeah, 36 is gonna be the current year.
Yeah.
Well, right now.
Yeah, theoretically.
Who knows what'll happen May 1st?
I mean, have they, they haven't started the '22 audit yet, have they?
No, well, we can't sign the contract because there's not enough money appropriated. We can't transfer until May 1st.
Right.
We know there's surplus money in the health insurance account. I mean, there's money there to move it in.
We've only got 21.5 budgeted. We've only got that much budgeted in there.
It's 22.5?
No, they're quoting 30. We've got, or 22.5, whatever, budgeted.
They want 36.
They want 36. So that, we can't do anything.
They want 36 for '22's audit.
No, for-
For '21.
21's audit.
Oh, okay, 'cause the budget says 21.5, but they want 36 to do, okay, gotcha.
I mean, we'd only been budgeting the, around the 21.5 all along. That's what we've been paying. And then this year, they went in a different direction so far.
I get the increase, but not, not to that scale.
Yeah. I mean, part of it was staffing and part of it was all sorts of different things that they were trying to tell us.
We paid somebody else to come in and kind of put things in order, so we, I mean, after Regina left, I'm talking about this person who's here.
It seems like they must've had to do a lot of extra work in order to-
To clean up 20, and they're trying to recruit it there. But, but also, the CPAs in general are going up anyways, because they're an older group. They're retiring out and, and newer folk, it's one of those jobs like nursing. Newer folks aren't coming up through the ranks and taking those positions.
Plus, you can't come out with a bachelor's and become a CPA. You now have to have a master's.
Yep. Pretty soon, they're gonna collect money as if they were, you know, never mind.
So have we, have we paid, um, the, I guess I could look in here somewhere, the money for the people that were actually closing the books for '21?
No, not yet.
Oh, Kincher?
Yeah.
We're not paying them monthly?
Haven't received the invoice yet.
So are you anticipating that to be higher because it's taken longer?
No.
'Cause they said they would be done by like March and, um-
You know, what we signed with them was a flat, a flat amount.
Flat amount? Didn't matter on what the length was, how long it took them? Okay, well, that's good.
I think so.
'Cause you don't wanna come back and have it be more money. So is, I'm just going, I'm just thinking, all those abatements and stuff in the overlay, are someone doing those journal entries for '22?
I'll check with Bradley on it.
You know, 'cause he'll get them from, well, are the assessors doing them? Because is Janine doing them? 'Cause there's really nobody in there. Are they getting that done? 'Cause then you won't have a true balance until you have, till you know what that is. Yeah, I would definitely check the ambulance, 'cause that 200 is, seems kinda high for what's left in there. And you have to leave money in there to pay for East Hampton when they do those transports.
Right.
So.
Okay. And the school took their second vote last night, right?
Yeah.
Just one thing, Ed, on the Winter Roads wages. I know we run in the deficit this year, so this is building in that expectation for Winter Roads wages a higher amount just because we went in the hole this year.
That was Randall's request, yes.
So from the 141 to 165.
We don't have to.
And we shouldn't.
141 to 165, yeah. I mean, that might be a place where we could-
Right.
Save a couple dollars.
Right, but you underst, you understand why you shouldn't add any additional money to that line item.
Because of the deficit spend, right?
Right. So once, once you bump it up, you can never bring it back down.
Right, right. So that's, that's what I was aiming, is, you know, there may be some savings there where it was.
Gotcha.
Maybe, I'm, I'm not sure, but, you know, it seemed like a, I mean, I understand the need, but I, whether that's the right way to capture that, I don't know.
Yeah, you, usually if you were going to think about adjusting it, you'd probably wanna run a five-to-seven-year history of it and take, take, take a look at.
Yeah, so like if one, if you set up a building permit somewhere-
Well, and I think Randall provided us that backup, I think, in his budget.
Yes, he did.
You've got that detail, so.
As long as you've collected as much for-
And we said the other day, right, that the amount in here for the library gets them their, what they need for their certification?
Yes, because I actually had that discussion with, because I, I wasn't gonna let it be in there, and then Barbara, Barbara looked at me and says, well, is it, we're looking at it and thinking that's contractual to get the, the grant money. So I said, fine, just leave it in there. Then we won't get confused.
I'm assuming that they didn't change these, but they could, you know, I mean, from when I had them in there.
Do you think folks see any savings in, in, that we could, you know, realize any savings in any of this? 'Cause I'm looking, fire and ambulance between the two and wages alone is up $70,000 from last year. Well, from this year to next year, if that goes through. I mean, do you have any concerns or questions about any of the parts? Kind of the trajectory of their increases, if they're that, to me, that's very significant. That's probably the most significant.
I didn't hear what you said, I'm sorry.
Fire and EMT wages. 35.1 and 34, I don't know.
Could you scroll on those, Ed? Let's see what they're-
Yeah, and what was, I don't know how he calculated that out.
Although this 220 for the approved budget in '22, does that probably not include, I guess we could look at the expenses, does that not include the additional $25,000 that he was looking for? 'Cause he was trying to increase those wages because people weren't coming here. Again, we have that same issue. People weren't coming here to work part-time, 'cause they could go work someplace else part-time and get paid 10 bucks an hour more than they were getting paid here. You know, in order to keep that running. I, I think that was his logic, how he came up with that number. I have to go back and look at his, well, the sheet.
The budget, if you had the 25, it's 240. The budget, if you had the twenty-five, it's the forty-five.
I think that when, yeah, when we did the town meeting, the special town meeting, he wanted thirty thousand or thirty-two thousand or whatever.
We gave him twenty-five.
We gave him twenty-five, but that was only for six months, because it was only basically covering from town meeting to the end of the year. So, this is doubling it.
So, this is the real-
Well, except at the time, he said that he didn't anticipate a full year would actually equate to double the money.
Yeah.
So, maybe, I don't know, maybe we can-
Yeah, so he had two-twenty, and then he added the twenty-five, so he was at two-forty-five.
See, in not looking at adjusted budgets, you know, it kinda skews if-
So, this is really only up to ten grand.
They never go back and remember everything that actually happened between then and now.
'Cause this would've reflected the original approved budget, because if I remember the FinCom meetings from last year, they really scrubbed, right, some of the wage issues, because if I'm not mistaken, I think the easiest way for John to manage that was to do sort of fifty-fifty split, same amounts for EMT and fire, and then that changed a little bit.
And a lot of it's a guess, I think, too, because he's got people at-
They do both.
-varying, and it's whoever takes the shift, so he doesn't know ahead of time at what rate he's paying.
But he did, this year, he did say, because the fifty-fifty split is mind-boggling, but I understand based on what he said, is it goes back three years when that was the, that was the recommendation that he worked out with everybody, so I get it, but three years later now, you have three years of actual numbers that you look at. And then he went on to say, fire is priority Monday through Friday on days, the rest of the time, ambulance is priority. So, he believed thirty percent of all his wages are actual fire.
Yeah, seventy-thirty is usually kinda-
Okay, then let's adjust his number set. It's still the same pot of money, but we'll start trying to figure out what that trend is.
Yeah, or you can take the last three years, see where they actually fell.
Where they actually spent.
And if you want, you can, rather than averaging them out, you can weight them and say, okay, it looks like it's, you know, forty-five, sixty-five, or whatever right now, or whatever, yeah.
Because if you take that two-fifty-four that he's asking for in EMT wages, and you divide it by this, I don't have it in my notes here, seventeen thousand man-hours, two people per shift, three hundred and sixty-five days, it comes up to fourteen-twenty-five an hour, which is below minimum wage. So, that's, that's what started the whole conversation with him.
Yeah. Yeah, and just to say that as of last year, so that orange column, that, the amount shifted from the two-thirty-one, it went down to two-twenty on the EMT, I think based on budget discussions last year and actual trends of how that had been spent. So, that's what got budgeted last year, how much, and then we added the amount for the town meeting, like you said, and I don't know where that, where would that show, the twenty-five thousand that got added? It doesn't show there at all, there.
So, it looks like a larger increase than it actually is.
It does, yeah, so it gives you an impression that it's a-
Because it already should've been rolled into the budget that we're looking at.
Okay, well, let's see if we can, if we have a better idea of actual expenses, we should be able to just pull, query those lines, right, and just say, you know, how much has been spent in those lines over the last three years, for example? I mean, not picking on that one, but I mean, in general, we should be able to find a little bit of a history here.
And John and I were talking about something else while you guys were talking about Winter Road wages. You probably, I mean, 'cause that's more than, whatever the increase is, two percent, three percent, that's more than a three percent increase for, to pay out of there, you could probably take that down. 'Cause you can deficit spend, but you still have to find someplace to make that up.
Right, exactly. Otherwise, it goes on your tax recap for the next tax year, so you start behind the buck.
Or you appropriate money from free cash to cover it, or operating stabilization, or transferring it from one of these other lines to that piece. Just a side note, in the expense report, somebody probably should enter, somebody should probably enter the assessments on the expense page, the assessments that get charged from the state, that they take away from your cherry sheet, they're not in the expense report.
Oh, gotcha, yeah.
Which means no one's doing the journal entries to record those, that come on the cherry sheet, so, and then the revenue report, I didn't, is there revenue in there for the enterprise funds? Did you guys record that in there, too, probably? I don't know.
Fit bay.
All right, so it is in there, okay. I was just, I didn't see it before, and I didn't look at this new one yet, so. Okay, just thinking out loud.
All right.
On the list of, the very short list of follow-up items that you have, Ed, could you-
John, remember when you walked in my office about two weeks ago, looked at me and said, just say no?
Well, you could, you could, but, and I'm happy to do this for you, but I don't wanna usurp your authority.
No.
Could you just, I think it's the, I think it's the Assessors Office that sends out the pilot bills to the-
Yes, they are, yeah.
Could you just confirm that that's actually happening for this year?
I can do that.
Thank you.
Did you hear me say that?
I did, I'm free to steal good ideas, one. I can take the heat for it.
If there's no further discussion tonight, shall we-
Well, should do adjourn?
Adjourn, all right.
Second.
All right, all those in favor?
Oi.
Hi, all right. And Finance, would you like to adjourn?
Even though we have a quorum, arguably. Yeah, I guess we do, there's only three of us.
Well, actually, you don't even have a quorum, so you didn't need to call your meeting to order or adjourn it or anything else.
Well, there's two with the three of us, so that's gotta be a quorum.
It's the number, full number of the committee, even if they're vacant.
No, because last year, when we were doing, we were doing transfers, and there was like one person on Finance, or there was two people, and only one showed up, I'm like, how can we do the end-of-year transfers? And what DLS told me was, if you have three, then two is a quorum.
Because we had four, we had four people.
That's what he told me in order to, because otherwise, you couldn't have approved those transfers, and you would've been stuck.
There were four people on Finance Committee.
Well, this was back in twenty-twenty, I think.
Yeah, okay.
But-
Yeah, I mean, I think, yeah-
That counts in order for you to do those transfers.
Yeah, okay.
Okay.
I think in many committees, we've been doing it by the number of seats that should be there, whether they're filled or not, but-
Thank you all, so we have another, may I send you a spreadsheet for what's up?
Yeah, so I guess just to be sure that everything has a formula in that total columns, 'cause some are hard copied in there rather than total formula wise, so, otherwise.
How about, we have an idea what is-
Added in.
While we're, when we're in the deck.